All right, everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? If so, look for motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, next up, we have a proclamation. I know we have at least one student, two students? Three students, okay, awesome. Great. Well, this, as you know, our Apopka Youth Works has kind of taken on youth mental health as their kind of their yearly platform. And so we wanted to, you know, this happens to be the Mental Health Wellness Day. And so I want to go ahead and read a proclamation, then we'll have the students come down along with Dr. Jackson, we'll get a picture, and Kate Manley. So let me read the proclamation. Whereas ADHD, anxiety problems, behavioral problems, and depression are the most commonly diagnosed mental disorders in children, and whereas mental health struggles unfortunately are common in teens, making up 16% of disease and injuries in people aged 10 to 19, and whereas one out of every five, 20.2% of students, report being bullied, and 41% of students who reported being bullied at school indicated they think the bullying would happen again. Students experienced bullying are at increased risk for depression, anxiety, sleep difficulties, lower academic achievement, and dropping out of school, as well as being at increased risk for suicide-related behavior. And whereas suicide is the third leading cause of death for youth between the ages of 10 and 24 years old, claiming 4,600 lives annually. And whereas World Teen Mental Wellness Day is observed across the globe on March 2nd every year, it is a day that aims to raise awareness about the mental health issues that teenagers deal with on a daily basis. And whereas this day is about making efforts to educate everyone and de-stigmatize mental health conditions across the world, and whereas mental wellness is an important aspect of health and overall emotional well-being. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested me by the City of Apopka, do hereby proclaim March 2nd, 2022 to be World Teen Mental Health Wellness Day. Thank you. So come on down, we'll get a picture, then would somebody like to, from the Youth Council like to say anything? Okay. You want to call and come forward, noon speak, and then we'll come down and get a picture.
Hi, I'm Kayden Jusom, and I'm part of the Apopka Youth Council. And we've been working closely with the Apopka Area Chamber of Commerce to make this day happen. We're also having a Mental Wellness Day Fair on both March 11th and March 12th. So if any of you can come, that would be great to help support mental illnesses that need to be talked about a lot more. Thank you.
Okay, we've got four presentations today. The first one will be by Allison Williams, Apopka City Center North.
Good afternoon, Allison Williams, Planner One with the city's Planning Division. On February 9th, 2022, the DRC approved the construction site plan for Wynn Dixie. The subject property is located at 611 East Main Street, north of 436 and east of South McGee. The site contains three vehicular access points off of 436, South McGee, and Monroe. A total of 240 parking spaces are provided, of which seven are accessible spaces. The applicant proposes Florida Flame Red Maples, Southern Live Oaks, and Sable Palms. These are the building or the architectural elevations. DRC recommends approval, and staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Allison?
Well, I guess a question would be, that's not for approval, it's just a presentation, correct?
Right, right, just to know if anybody, okay. Good, and then Jim, you're gonna follow that up with?
Kind of continuing on, this is, this next portion of this is for the rest of the city center, we kind of wanted to give you all a catch-up. Back a couple of years ago, we did do a new development agreement, this was the original map that came with it, and, let's see here, getting a pointer here, just a second. So this is the Wynn Dixie that Allison just presented here. Taurus did carve out a little outlot here for another use. And we've got other locations they had originally thought for restaurant. I do have another slide that will show a little bit more detail on this. This building ended up becoming one large building with about five users. This is where the Starbucks is going. This building here also became bigger, and this is where the brewery and restaurant is going to be going in. We still have two parcels on the west side of McGee that they can buy within the next, I believe it's two years. And of course, this is where the Highland Manor is, and the Hilton Garden Inn. And then they also have another potential site here, whether or not they use that, I'm really not sure, because they did carve this out here, which is obviously a lot more visual for potential developments. This is the updated map that shows what has been purchased by tourists and what is left. So all of these purchases are, properties have already been purchased. These are the two properties that I mentioned that are left over for actual development. And then there's also what I call the sign parcel, that's where we'll have the sign coming off of 441 directing where the city center actually is. And also, just to kind of give you a real quick update on this, this is McGee right here, we are in, we probably will have the final design for the bike way or the trail downtown that will be going on the south side of Sixth Street up to Forest Ave. And then we're going to flip to the north side, and then that will continue on over to the west side of Park Ave. So we're getting that connection, I'm hoping, we're hoping to go out to bid on that probably in May or June. This is the north side that Allison just went through. This part right here, we just got a concept plan in, so obviously, we haven't even reviewed it for, but the conceptual is that will probably be a ViStar credit union. I don't know if you've seen one, there's one out on the west side of Mount Dora on 441, beautiful looking building too. And it's kind of nice coming in to see nice buildings right up front. The other potential, this is, this property right here is the one that council at the last meeting approved for the mixed use. Potentially, there's a whole bunch of different mixed use categories, but that's what they were originally looking for was apartments. This is, of course, the Dairy Queen here, and there were two properties in between there that are owned by the Argoballs. And what we would obviously like to do is get some interconnectivity, because there's such a drop going this way, there's, they really can't connect, interconnect right here because of the size of the walls that are required in order to be able to develop the property. So what we'd like to do is get a four-way stopper intersection here at Christiana. So I just put that on there just as, just as, I guess you could say, general information. Obviously, we ended up working with DOT, Pam did a phenomenal job coordinating the intersection with the two different stop bars and the traffic lights here and here to actually coordinate the traffic. So it goes, instead of going from four lanes down to three, down to two, down to one, we now can go, basically it's three down to two, and you can go through without worrying about somebody running into the side of you. Helped quite a bit, wish FDOT would have done that in the first place, but. And then this is the southern, excuse me, the southern portion. This is again, this is where the Hilton Garden Inn here is, this is the brewery, so I went ahead and brought the facade up for that. You can probably see it better on your monitors for the audience, I'm sorry, we're working on getting a little bit brighter camera for this, but this will show up a little bit better. And then this is where the Starbucks is, and then the multi-tenant building, we've got a crosswalk here coming in from the south, some on-street parking running right along this cross street for the project itself. And we also have a sidewalk coming in from McGee and Main Street at this location here. And then this is basically what it looks like, or what it will look like. This is a rendition that the tourist group was able to provide, of course, with the Hilton Garden Inn over here, the brewery location over here, Starbucks, and then the multi-tenant building is logged here. Far cry from just that, just the Townsend's plantation that used to be there, you know, 40 years ago. And that's all I've got.
Good.
Just want to give you an update.
I just want to know, are we pushing code enforcement for the Burger King corner so that it's, it will come up to the level that we're aiming at here?
We, yeah, if, I'm getting mixed signals from Burger King, you know, I've been hearing, nobody's there, I've heard there's, like, I've seen one, maybe two cars there every once in a while. Tourists did tell me that they are reaching out to them to see if they can get that property because it's basically not being used. And then that way, we'd be able to control both corners coming in off of McGee, so it's...
It's not owned by Burger King, it's owned by REIT, but that's the problem.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's a multi-billion dollar REIT that owns, you know, and so it's trying to get them to sell off one piece of property is...
Even if we can just get them to upgrade the landscaping to look, you know, cleanliness.
It's, yeah, it needs help.
Any other questions for Jim?
That's possible, traffic-wise, yeah, that's, that would definitely be a Pam question. Traffic-wise, it works good if there's not a lot of noise, like downtown, I think Mount Dora has one of their main crosswalks, but when you get to a crosswalk where the traffic is, you know, 35, 25, at an intersection where you have that much noise, the only people that would hear it would be the people that are walking, the cars aren't going to hear a beep.
Pam, you want to address that?
I've talked to DOT about that, they have certain rules, but I'm tenacious, and we're going to get something more enhanced than what we have there. I know what you're talking about, I was with the Best Foot Forward people, we almost got run over walking across the street, and we had a police officer with us. So I think something needs to be done, we're going to find an upgrade. It might, it may be a visual upgrade, it may include something visual as far as pavement or lighting or something, but we're going to do it, and we're going to make sure DOT lets us, I just can't tell you right now what that is. But I am working on it. I know, but I don't have $6 to $10 million or the right away for that. But if I did, I'd build you a bridge.
All right, got it.
Mr. Becker? Thank you, Jim, thanks, Allison, appreciate it. Okay, next up, Brian Foreman and the Trekking Group, talking about Camp Weewah and improvements in a partnership.
Good afternoon, I'm here with Olivier, we mentioned this at the last meeting about what we're trying to do at the ropes course and climbing wall and zip line over at camp, so, he's with the Trekking Group, and we've been working on this since August. This is a rendering of the back of the climbing wall, you can see different elements as part of an adventure park that's proposed for the back of it at Camp Weewah. There's a layout, so you can see back of the climbing wall. Here, look at that, back of the climbing wall, zip line over in this area. You see a lot of elements right behind there. There's general elements, so for adult courses, kids' courses, zip tour, and a netting zone. And then there's renderings of the zip tour, if you're coming off the top of the climbing wall, going back towards Mud Lake, and then going back farther into the park, into the camp. And then you can see, there's from one of the platforms, you can see the climbing wall in the background. There's a net zone that comes across, and there's game examples, and I saw some of these when I went to visit at Daytona Beach. These are for, these are adult game examples. And then there's kids' game examples as well, sort of trying to serve everybody. This is not what I was, there's a different presentation, Rob. This is a different one that I sent you. Because there's another slide. So, the proposed, the proposed term length is 10 years with two five-year renewal terms, direct income to the city in the first three years. We're trying to, remember we talked about, we want them to be financially secure, so we're not looking at taking any rent from them the first three years, and then starting in the fourth year is 5%, and then after that, 10%. They're proposing to put in $350,000 of capital, they would do all the operating and the repair expenses, and the city's investment, because again, we want them to be strong, because their success is our success as far as building, camp registrations, rentals, that kind of stuff, so, up until $160,000 of capital that they put in, the city doesn't do anything that's on them. After they get to $160,000 of capital investment, then the city matches that 50% at a rate of $20,000 a year. So if they do, to example math, $400,000, if they put $400,000 in, then we would pay them $20,000 a year for 10 years, so we could do that. And then their projected gross revenue ranges from $346,000 in year one, to in year three, $512,000, and then $780,000 in year five. Pricing for the zip line, their proposed pricing so far is $40 for the zip line, $35, $35 for the park, $10 to be in the net area, 15% resident discount, and 40% discount for camp, for camp registrations. So that's the, that's what we're working on as far as an agreement, the basis for an agreement, it's still in negotiating, we don't have a, there's nothing, you know, we just kind of sent a proposal back and forth, but that's where we are on that. Now, Olivier, Olivier's here, I will caution you that English is not his first language, so, so he's a little, but if you guys have any questions, please feel free.
Good afternoon, I'm Olivier Petit, I'm representing the company Tree Top Trekking Group, located in Canada. I'm French, so yes, my English is not the best, but I will try to answer your question if you have something for me.
So, any questions for the Trekking Group?
I have no. Unfortunately, I'm going to be very quiet today.
No, I'm excited about the opportunity there, I think it's a great à la carte that will draw a lot of other interests there, and so I'd just love to see the quality.
Yeah, one of the things you didn't mention, O'Brien, that they're going to take over all of the sporting, is that right, are we still, are we? Still working on that, okay, we were talking about having them take on all the voting and, yeah. Yeah, determined.
And that moves it more towards my comforts, and my concern about that, having private enterprise, it just does best, so I'm glad we're moving in that direction.
Mr. Smith?
Can we get a copy of the one slide you said you didn't have it up to?
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
All right, thank you.
That's what I was going to ask, because is there rev share built into that agreement too, I know, expense share, but?
It's 10%, after we get it passed, so it's initial at zero, and then it's 5%, and then it builds up to 10% of their gross revenue.
And are they full owner-operator?
Yes, correct.
What happens after the term of the agreement?
It's being...
Is the expectation is that you're just going to get enough revenue to cover your cost over that 10-year period? And if the agreement goes, you surrender all capital improvements?
I think if we take the same direction than we take with the city of Daytona Beach, after 10 years, we have the possibility to renew with two term of five years with you, or after that, we have the possibility to sell to another company, you know, under the contract with your approval. You have the choice to deny, to renew the two prior to five years after the first 10 years, and push us the insulation at the fair market price. We have a very good expertise in operating in USA. We built the first one in 2009 in Central Florida Zoo with a huge success, it was the first course this way in USA in 2009. After that, we built many place with existing park like this in USA. We still operating the one in Daytona Beach. In the meantime, I bring this concept in USA in 2009.
Okay, so I could just use, yeah, I could just use Daytona Beach as that frame of reference?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Daytona Beach, we have 30 years contract with the city, I make a deal with the city in 2012 for 30 years. You can contact the city with no problem, it's very easy to sit, and we have a very good relationship with the city, and the city don't want us to leave either of the contracts.
That's a good sign.
Have the possibility to renew, I think, in two years. But the way we want to bring this business in your, in your community, is to bring something else than just investment image for us in USA. We want to operate, we want to develop and bring new idea, you know what, maybe in five years, we have a new concept we want to put in place, and maybe it's, it's a good area for us and for you to have a brand-new activity that then don't exist in Florida right now, it's a couple of zip line course, but we want to bring more with our net concept, you know, example, it's, it's take a long to explain to everybody, but quickly, it's possible to send people up in the air with no harness, just netting, install between tree or pole, and people progress on this net with no harness, no, no, no connection with any safety line. It's, it's a new concept we bring in Canada, very successful, and we want to bring this in USA with the support of the city of Apopka, you know?
Correct.
And I'm pretty sure it's, it will be a
Good.
A very good success for you.
And I'll just say that Commissioner Velazquez, her voice is like that because she was trying to practice her French in anticipation of you coming here today.
You know what, let's see where we go, but I still good with my French, better than my English, sorry about that.
English is good.
We chat in French. I hope so. I'm pretty sure, it don't take long.
Michael, do you want to talk just about?
Well, just, I mean, we have already, I've already sent the first draft of an agreement to the Trekking Group for their review. While it is modeled after the Daytona Beach agreement, there are some significant differences between their relationship with us and their relationship with Daytona Beach, namely, the biggest difference is that the city is actually going to be providing funding to partially fund the construction, so therefore, there are certain obligations that differ from Daytona Beach. The Daytona Beach agreement constituted a use permit in which they went on to a city park, and I think the facility in Daytona Beach is going to be different, because you're not going to incorporate our vegetation or trees, this is, you're, the facility is proposed for Camp Weewah as a freestanding, so there are certain, certain other differences and certain other obligations, but we're in the midst of negotiations right now, so, but I just wanted to, while it is modeled after the Daytona Beach agreement, there are significant, there are substantive differences between the two, namely, because it's just, it's a different situation and a different proposal that's being made here that we're, the first draft has been sent to them, I'm awaiting responses, and we'll be going forward with negotiations.
And how is the liability covered?
No, the, there is identifications to the city. It is basically their operating, it's their use.
So even though we're investing in part of the infrastructure, the liability is still carried by them?
Correct, that's, the agreement still has the liability similar to what their liability relations are in regards to city Daytona Beach, so that's no changes. The question, and I said, that's what's going to be open to negotiation, is what's going to happen with the infrastructure should they elect to leave? Because the city, it's, it's the city's intention, they said this is still all subject to negotiation, because the city has basically helped fund about 50% of this, there is a question as to whether the city's going to take some ownership stake in the infrastructure that's being placed on their property because of the contribution on the part of the city, and the fact that for the first three years, they're going to be operating on the public property rent-free. But again, it's all subject to negotiations, I don't want to spill out all the negotiations now, and I'm awaiting for their response, and then we can go from there.
Yeah, just one other question on the marketing, is that something that you will heavily market, do you have a plan that you've done consistently, just?
Marketing, we have, we have a big marketing company, they work for us in Canada, they can work in USA also. Right now, we just create because we reorganized a little bit, this industry changed very quickly, so we reorganized the organization in Daytona, and we create a new position for marketing person to advertise for us in Daytona. If we arrive at a good agreement with you, and we create this, this project with you, at that moment, we bring our expertise in, in marketing and combine, try to combine the, the both location, and if we have another location, put this under the group of USA, Tree Top Trekking USA, I say, I say this, but maybe it's another name, but we can use this power of more location to create a bigger marketing. We do this in the past with Sanford Zoo and Daytona Beach, but after a moment, we, we, we stopped our partnership with the zoo, so we just start again with one park. We built other location in Florida, we wait for this location to open and start marketing too, but what we want to do is to bring everything on the same marketing with different location, because Florida is wide, and many people live in this area, so it's good to have a general marketing, and after a specific marketing for each, each position, each location, sorry.
Okay, yeah, and obviously, if we can work together and utilize that for the rest of the camp, and them use the camp to draw to them, I think it's a good working plan.
Sorry, like in Daytona, we work with the Chamber of Commerce, the CVB, and all the institution in Daytona Beach right now, I'm pretty sure we have the same opportunity here with the Chamber of Commerce, and maybe go work with Orlando Chamber of Commerce too, because it's so close and big too, with a huge amount of people, and people come to visit this area, it's, it's important maybe to work with more than just one, one, one Chamber of Commerce, and maybe try to expand and advertise in different direction.
Excellent.
Any other questions? Brian?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate Olivia. Okay, Susan, you're going to go down front?
Okay, so today I'm here to give you a little update on the plating. And as you know, we were running very, very low on spaces, in fact, we were down to 32 single spaces, we had six side-by-side only, and we do have some double depths, we have nine left, and the cremains, we have plenty, we have approximately 88. So we have undergone the process of having our... So we have undergone the process of having our, a couple of additional areas replatted. And so the, as they are laid out, we have, hold on one second, I'm not pushing this. We have the, these areas in red are track A is going to be, I'll show you where it is. Let me go ahead here. It's going to be this area here, right here. And it's going to be right as you come in the main gate, you would make a right and we're going to have a circle driveway that goes around that, which isn't built yet. And so then we have the next area is going to be over at the overflow, which is right here at that part. It's over right off of Highland. As you come in the dog park entrance, it's going to be right in there. And at that, at that section, we're going to have 40 blocks of 14, which is going to have a total of 560 spaces in that area. I didn't tell you how many were in the other one, but it was, the, the first section that I showed you was 630 spaces. That's going to be 45 blocks of 14. And lastly, we have another section that's also right off the main gate. And this is going to have 40, I'm sorry, 30 blocks of 14. And we have one small block right there that is a half block. You can't really see it. I'm sorry, so I gave you guys a copy, but it's still so small. But it's only going to have seven. So there's 30 and a half blocks in that section. So basically, the plating has been reviewed by staff. We've returned it to Southeastern for their finalization. And so we should have the final plat in-house by mid-March. Once we record the plat, we can start selling the new sections. So current, I, the current fee schedule is what we, oh, I have to go back, hold on, is what we approved back in October of 2020, which is 1,000 for resident and 14 for a non-resident. And we do, so with that, 200 of that goes into the perpetual fund, the cemetery perpetual fund that we established so that we can continue the maintenance and perpetuity for these, for the cemetery once these spaces are all sold and, you know, so. And with that, so we're looking forward to having some spaces that were available instead of, you know, having to, to get creative with it, so. Anybody have any questions? I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for Susan?
It's, I just got with Edward just before here and just, you know, the $200 that we've been taking to put in that perpetual fund, we started in 2020. We now have $49,000 in that fund. So as we get these all filled, those $200 will have enough, I think, hopefully to, you know, the, the maintenance then will be covered by the perpetual fund.
And Commissioner Velasquez would like to know if the children's area is expanded.
We still do have some spaces of children's area.
Okay, so it's not expanded, but there's just already spaces available?
Yes.
And, and how soon that you think we're going to be doing this?
We'll have the plat in-house after it's recorded with the county in approximately two weeks. So by the end of the month, I would say that we're going to be ready to start selling those.
Okay, and what about the construction of the road?
That is going to be something that we're still, Narette and his team were working on it, so it's in the budget, so hopefully right.
And the reason why I ask is because at the last meeting, there was some concern about some of the roads are already bad. And we said we was going to wait till we did this to repair those roads. And so just wondering.
Commissioner, our plan, our hopes are, is to finish the plating, get the plating done so that we can have, so we know where everything's going to be platted and then come back. Public Service is going to come back with the road plan and then we'll bring that back so you can see the improvements that we're going to make to the roads and try to do them all at the same time.
Okay.
Mr. Becker?
I'm okay.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Edward, anything need to be moved around the agenda?
Um, no, Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay. Public comments, Susan?
Mr. Bell?
Afternoon. It's funny how.
Name an address for the record, please.
Leroy Bell. I'm a citizen and of the city of Apokka.
Your residence, please.
I, I won't do that. You said, you said on the news the other night that you blacked out the police face, called for retaliation, and I, I don't want to put my eyes out there. But I would like to start out with thanking Commissioner Smith. 20 years ago to this date, you officiated and laid my father to rest. This mayor, Mayor Lann, came and wrote a proclamation that every March 2nd, Apokka will Reverend Willie Bell day. And our family forever be grateful to you for that. And this brings up, he was a man of great integrity, a man that had 170 young black African-American kids off the street in Apokka. And it's heartening to see that here in Apokka, he was a police officer for 10 years here in Apokka, up under the chief, Tom Collins. And they worked with the kids. They policed the kid differently. And it was heartening to see that how 11-year-old kid was treated by his own bicycle. Something had to happen. We spending all this money on Camp Weewa, no problem at all. The city probably needs it, but you can find some way to spend some of this money on police training. You can spend on how they interact with these kids, with the citizens of Apokka. And I would end with you, Commissioner Bankston. On last meeting night, you declared that you were going to run for 39. I would like to sit down. I would like to bring three sworn statements to you that people's willing to testify that you claimed that someone pulled a knife on your son. Your son was trying to bully a 59-year-old disabled veteran. Were you there? No, you wasn't.
I was there shortly after.
Yeah, you was there shortly after.
Yeah.
But it was citizens that passed by that scene with transpire. And you came in and you made it seem like somebody was just down on your, on your son. Oh, let me finish. Now, we talk about prejudice. When we talk and sit down with these sworn statement, we want to go back and we want to talk about the N-word coming out of your church. We want to talk about the dirty Mexicans coming out your church. We want to talk about, we want to talk about pictures that Donald Trump economy is so good that Barack Obama want to file for citizenship. You can't throw rocks when you're living in a glass house. Mayor, once and for all, I, I would like to say to you, you got some pretty good advice the other day and I pray to God that you stick with it. Stick to real estate and lead law to the real lawyers. Again, thank you, Commissioner Smith, and we'll forever grateful for you.
So if I can address that, first of all, I have avoided this for a long time, but you, sir, were the one that pulled the knife on my son. Now, I'm, it's my turn to talk. I went there when I heard there was a disturbance, something going on and that there was things going back and forth between the gentleman and my son, who are both holding signs. When I got there, had a very good talk with him, there was much peace, everything was fine. I had no idea that these things had, had come about. Then we got the call about what happened. We have it on recording of what you said and all the foul things that you said and came out of your mouth.
Well, please, please.
And so we did file a report. We didn't press the charges because I don't want there to be further division. I'm not sure where, what all of the issues are. As I've told you before, I tried to sit down and meet with you for several years. My door is wide open. The accusation that you said about these different words, they're egregious and we dealt with those things. They are not something that we support or sponsor in any way, shape or form. Did not come from me and are not sponsored from my church. So that's, that's just
Yes.
False accusation.
It, it, it's not false accusation.
Yes, it is.
Well, I can come, I can come the next meeting night and put them up when your brother said these things, when your niece Abby Bankston said the dirty Mexican and he's just a nigger. Now, wait, no, hold on, hold on.
No, 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 no. No, you did have your chance to speak. This is my chance now.
Yes, but, but now.
Those things were addressed. My brother never said anything like that, was appalled at what happened, that his teenage daughter, excuse me.
Oh, this is on this Facebook page along with hers.
Excuse me, sir, this is my turn now. That his teenage daughter spoke that were egregious. She got up before our church and repented. She dealt with those things. She sought counsel and got offline to deal with that. These are things that teenagers say things all the time, but those are not anything that we approved, we dealt with. My own brother never said those kind of words, would never say that. And he himself stepped out of a place of ministry to make sure he was ministering directly to his family. So these things were absolutely addressed in integrity and in virtue. And we appalled these things. I appalled those words and have never used them myself and do not condone anyone doing such. So, you know, this, this is slander.
You know, it, it's, it's funny, it's funny how people create a storm and when it go to raining and you start getting wet, then you want to play the victim. Now, 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 it's my turn. My thing is this, even, well, I, I'll sit down, but it, even the way that the police officer, police show, your church and all this, but it, either here or there, that's not there. But what I'm saying is this, you bring the charges, you was in, you was in the Orlando Sentinel when your son called himself finna run me out. And he would have been dealt with if my wife hadn't have been there. And here's a man sitting right there.
Absolutely false.
Here's a man, here's a man sitting right there, was in the front of the store up on Central when he got ready to fight me and he ran up on, I'm 59-years-old and here he is 30-some-years-old. Mr. Rucker saved him that day. Mr. Rucker saved your son that day. And here it is, you wasn't nowhere around and now his mouth was cut like a grasshopper too now. Now you got, you got witnesses that seen what happened. And then you going to come up in here and, and try to garner support like someone like me just because I'm outspoken? Now here I am, I'd have served my country, I'd have been shot at, I'd have been almost killed, people killing, dying around me. And here it is, a young man going to run up in my face and going to bully me. That go a man right there. That go a man standing right there that seen it and I'm not going to protect myself? You know what? You're delusional.
Sir, did you not say that you were going to F-up my son? First, you did. And did you not pull a knife?
Can the chair do a point of order?
And pull it out?
Point of order.
Can we move forward to the next? This is, this is public comment. This isn't airing of laundry or, just move to the next speaker.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane in, lane in Apokka. First of all, I want to thank you all for what you do for the community. I know it sometimes, that many times, probably a thankless job. I'm here to talk about backflow preventers. I've done a little homework. I've had neighbors come to me and I'm trying to wield my way through a number of things, so please be patient with this. First, I think as a service to the community, this is something the city of Apokka should do. They should take care of it, take it off the hands of homeowners. Homeowners, two homeowners have paid 400, $1,485 right across the street from you, Commissioner. And the other, a retired Colonel in the Army, $883.95. This is ludicrous. Plumber makes $85 to $140 an hour. The dual-check valve that's being proposed is $190 to $200 wholesale, the repair kit $30. The Ford model, which is the city model has right now, is about $100 in value wholesale. Unit will not fit in the box that's currently there, so it requires additional labor to get it done to the tune of another $150 to $250. The Zerl model and also approved model is $880 wholesale, installation $100 to $200. So homeowners are all in $250 to $500 and is in the one case, $883.95. Units are in limited quality, repair kits, kits are in limited quality, quantity right now. The homeowner can install it safely by themselves, doesn't require a plumber to do it, can do it. And then it's up to the city, according to the state, to take a look at it, not inspect it, but observe the fact that it's installed. Orange County residents pay $3 a month to have the service taken care of. Out of their hands, they take care of it. I just found out on the way here, driving here, that Apokka, not Apokka, excuse me, Altamont Springs does it as well. All the residents, if you use the dual-check system, which is a five-year system, they do the inspection, they do the install and work from there. If someone wants to put in something other than the dual system, they're on their own in Altamont Springs. I strongly urge you to take control of this matter. It's a win-win. It will provide a wonderful service to the citizens of this community. It will be more user-friendly for the taxpayers. And the city, who the state holds accountable, will be in control of what happens. They'll have, they'll be able to save and streamline the process because they know I've inspected 3156 on this date. It's good for five years, they come back again. Instead of monitoring it, oh, well, geez, Mr. Olson didn't do it. We better get someone to do it and Mickey Mouse around with that. You guys need to take this, I think. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Sylvester Hall, 3091 Rolling Hills Lane. I'm not sure is that address is required by the Florida statute, so if you could verify that for me, I think you only have to give your name. But in this case, I give you my address. I served for 21 years, I have no fear. But when you say that statement, what love got to do with it? It's got everything to do with it. When you say, can't we all get along? It seem like we all want to get along, but nobody's listening to each other, nobody's hearing each other out. So here, as I told the board before, my mission is to bring love and prosperity to all the communities in the US of A, starting with South Apokka. So that's why I'm here. And it all goes to leadership. How can we look at the same thing and see so many different results? How can we look at the same thing and have so many different ways of doing it when it should be just one way, wrong way, right way? Fair, what's fair, what's unfair? And that's what I want to run through. Last time I brought this slide. Last time I brought this slide presentation, I didn't get a chance to use it, so this time I'm gonna go ahead and go through it before my time is up. But just like my neighbor just came up and said, it's all about leadership and how you see things and your way of dealing with things. And there what we was talking about before, this slide, as I go back and look at it, it, when you go and view it online, you don't see the slide presentation. And I think that's wrong. And sometimes the comments that are said are not put in there exactly like they would say it. So I think that's another issue that needs to be, needs to be addressed. But we was talking about how Employee Service Award, how some people do it, just like he just pointed out with the backflow preventers. It's all about leadership. It's all about leadership. The things that we do and things that other people do. So it's just up to the people. What leadership, what's who you want guiding you? And when back to poverty, it's not an accident, just like slavery and apartheid is man-made and can be removed by the actions of human beings. And I said it before, poverty is not by accident and it's not a charity, it's a right. It's, it's for us to take care of the poor, that's our responsibility. The church, what is the role of the church? Well, you're gonna see some pictures of some churches that I took about six, seven years ago, so I've been well invested in this. It's not something I just started doing yesterday. Six, seven years ago, when I got out of the Navy, I started getting into the community. And I look at the church and what are the roles of the church? And one afternoon, I just started driving about two mile radius in this all-poverty area. You got about 23, 24 churches located in that same area. And I'm gonna just go through, you may recognize some of these churches. And sorry about some of the pictures, they're not as clear, but if you know the area, you know the church. Now, things, uh, one of the things Dr. Martin Luther King said, you know, nothing is more, in this world, nothing is more dangerous than sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity. I'd like to add one to that. If you got, just think, if you got a, if you're a pastor of any type and you got command of using the most powerful word known to man, that's God's word. And you're charismatic and you're beautiful or you're handsome. Now, just think, if this, if a pastor had these type of things in his heart, wicked heart, no moral conscience, manipulator, no principles, no ethics. So when I go around and I look at that area that's poverty and it's, and it's heavily saturated with churches, something is wrong with me. Something, some says to me, something is wrong. Because God's word is true today, yesterday and, and tomorrow. It's that way. And so you cannot teach God's word and live in poverty for so many years, decade after decade. Look at the map of South Apopka. Look down there where you see South Apopka at. See how it's been annexed all around? It's like a cert, like a chef cutting fat off steak. Even Ray Cowles can see there's something wrong. This young lady here, we was walking around, this is the day after Christmas, 2015, 2016. I call her a young lady, but she's a beautiful senior citizen. They put a brand-new roof on her house. She had just got a letter saying that, hey, the, the houses need to be condemned. So why put a brand-new roof on a house that need to be condemned? But you look at these areas in South Apopka and you ask yourself, how can they, how can this be? This is Taylor Apartments. To my surprise, they always say, well, if you build it in the, in the poverty community, they ain't gonna do nothing but tear it up. Well, this is a testimony right here because Taylor Apartments still look, you know, the same and it's been there so many years. This is where I came in at, when I first came in in Orlando, about 50 years ago. That neighborhood still looked the same 50 years ago. And that's a problem. This is where I want South Apopka to look, where I live at in Rock Springs Ridge, I want it to look the same way. Our lives begin to end the day that we start to be silent about things that matter. And there's a lot of people, good white folks, good black folks, sitting on the sidelines, seeing bad things happening and not saying anything about it. We need to change that.
Thank you, Sylvester, appreciate you.
Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else, Susan?
Good afternoon. My name is David Hoffman. I live in Rock Springs Ridge, 3610 T-Side Court. And the title of my talk this afternoon is, "Look to Ukraine As We Strive For Democracy To Sustain." Last fall, November 2nd, Apopka City officials, Mayor Nelson and City Attorney Michael Rodriguez, informed Rock Springs Ridge citizens at an amphitheater meeting, the city would no longer be engaged with us in our efforts to strike a bargain with the Gulf Group to stave off any further building development. One exception, however, stood out. The sale and development of the 51-acre Tortoise Preserve to raise money to buy the closed golf course would necessitate a zoning change for all of Rock Springs Ridge from one home per acre to two homes per acre. Thus, city officials informed us, we are on our own and that we couldn't expect no further help from City Hall. What is democracy? Let's turn our gaze now to the truly heroic, courageous people of Ukraine as they struggle mightily, valiantly to save their democracy from their forever menacing neighbor totalitarian Putinland, Russia. These people are willing to die to deter a brutal oppressive neighbor. Americans can only look on with a sense of humility and embarrassment as huge swaths of our own population have expressed that they want nothing to do with the markers of thriving democracy. Everything from unfettered voting rights to a healthy, robust public education system that provide our beautiful children the opportunity to experience the proverbial American dream. These unending legions look to a totalitarian wannabe, wannabe for inspiration. The upshot is that as we, as we gaze at the Ukrainian people, there should be a wake-up call. While Ukrainians will sacrifice all to preserve their democracy, we in America must face a brutal reality. Our democracy is on a respirator, especially right here in Florida. At Rock Springs Ridge, we reached a crunch point, our efforts to achieve an agreement with the Gulf Group. But we will need help and cooperation from you, city officials, to achieve our ends as well as a settlement satisfactory to the Gulf Group. We're asking you to help with various details relating to the city's role and to demonstrate a spirit of democracy and constituent service. We invite you to habitually practice democracy. You might like it. Let us wear our blue and yellow and let us join in solidarity with the people of Ukraine and rededicate ourselves to a robust, all-inclusive democracy for our children's sake and the sake of the children of Rock Springs Ridge. Thank you.
Okay, we have three items on consent. Look for motion to approve. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Apopka 429 Major Development Plan. Bobby.
Good afternoon, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Subject property is located southwest of US 441, west of the Apopka Airport. And the major development plan details the construction of infrastructure servicing three warehouse buildings totaling 2,501,200 square feet in the area. Buildings will be accessed via Apopka Logistics Parkway. Per the comprehensive plan, 20% of the parking spaces for each building will be constructed of pervious materials. Stormwater is proposed for discharge into five ponds that are located throughout the site. The Development Review Committee recommends approval. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. And the recommended motion this afternoon is to approve the buildings within Apopka 429 Major Development Plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve the Apopka 429 Major Development Plan for buildings.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Oakview Major Development Plan. Phil.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner 2 with the City's Planning Division. The applicant is proposing a major development plan for a 113 single-family lot subdivision known as Oakview. The subject properties are highlighted in yellow and located south of West Kelly Park Road and east of Round Lake Road. The surrounding area consists of residential and agricultural properties along with West Kelly Park Road to the north, Round Lake Road to the west and Epi Drive to the northeast. The major development plan shows 113 single-family lots with a minimum lot width of 55 feet. The proposed minimum living area is 1,600 square feet and access to the site is proposed off of West Kelly Park Road here to the north. Four vehicular and pedestrian future access points are proposed. And in addition, three future pedestrian connections are also proposed with one being here at the northwest part of the development and the other two being located here. The applicant has provided 9.48 acres of open space where 7.73 acres are required. The open space includes a community pool, walking trails that are depicted in blue, and a playground. The major development plan is consistent with the master plan that was approved by City Council on July 21st, 2021. The Development Review Committee and Planning Commission unanimously recommend approval of the major development plan. And the recommended motion for this afternoon is to approve the Oakview Major Development Plan. This concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have, as well as the applicant.
Any questions for Phil? Anybody from public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve the Oakview Major Development Plan.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Vladimir. This is coming up, the, we've been working on this for, gosh, probably a year. Just to kind of give you a little bit of the background, the, we've just finished up the 300 million gallon pond on Golden Jim and we're adding another 50 or 60 million next to it. But one of the things that we've got because of our agreements with Orange County, with Altamont Springs and with Utilities, Inc., there still could be a need for additional storage. And if we can get some funding from the state or federal government to take on the border lake water, it would definitely be a necessity. So we've been trying to, we've got some, some additional land in the back of the public services facility, but if we really wanted to do a big pond, this is something we wanted to try to put together. So Vlad and his team have kind of come together and put together a, the purchase as well as what, what it will kind of ultimately look like. So Vladimir, take it on, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Vladimir Simanovsky. I'm with the Public Services Department. Mayor, Commissioner, what we bring in front of you today is two requests to approve the contract for purchase of real properties. So the first request is to approve the contract for purchase of 4.24 gross acres of real property, which is located at 556 Snowden Road, Apopka, Florida 32703, in the amount of $212,000. That's the property that you see right there. The second property, oops. The second property, the second request is to approve the contract for purchase of 0.34 gross acres of real property, which is located at Snowden Road, Apopka, Florida 32703. There's no number on Snowden Road, in the amount of $17,000. That's the smaller property that you see right there on the screen. And I'm gonna give you a brief summary before you, you set to motion on what's happening here. So what you see highlighted in those four properties, actually, the shaded area, it's basically City of Apopka owns 96.87 acres of real property at 333 Snowden Road, Apopka, Florida 32703. That's the large property, sorry. Is it this one? The top? Okay, yeah. That's that property to the north. So this property is located between East Cleveland Street to the north, Snowden Road to the south, South Schiller Avenue to the east and Old Apopka Road to the west. And it's currently a home of the city's Public Services Operations Complex and Water Reclamation Facility. The city also owns 49.5 gross acres of real property at 38 Snowden Road, Apopka, Florida 32703, which is this property here. And located just south of Snowden Road and east of Old Apopka Road. This property is also a home of the Apopka Water Reclamation Facility and houses two reclaim water storage reservoirs with total capacity of 16 million gallons as well as a south spray field for eject reclaim water. In addition to these two real properties, the city owns two other vacant real properties south of Snowden Road. The first property consists of 0.85 sig gross acres and is located at 550 Snowden Road, the same address, which is, trying to, that's this smaller property here that you see right next to the adjacent that we're requesting for approval. Well, the second property consists of another 9.5 acres and located at 574 Snowden Road, also Apopka, Florida 32703. That's the property to the right here. So you can see there's no, there's no adjacency between the, the two properties, actually, these three properties that are on the south side. So the three real properties owned by the city, south of Snowden Road, consist of combined 59.82 gross acres. Now, the city has plans of expanding its water reclamation facility in this area, which is primarily south of Snowden Road, where construction of a new reclaim water storage reservoir is planned, as the mayor said earlier, to alleviate the abundance of reclaim water received from City of Altamont Springs and Utilities, Inc. In order to make the construction of the new reclaim water storage reservoir feasible, the city needs to acquire the remaining properties located south of Snowden Road, adjacent to the city's real properties, which is the two properties that you can see here. That's the first one and that's the second property here. In addition to that, we're in the process of acquiring these additional two properties, which acquiring this property will give an opportunity to the city to vacate Snowden Road because there will be no other properties coming to it. While the swivel here, actually, the smaller property that you see on the east side to the right, that's actually portion of the property of Engelman's Nursery, which is to the south of that. So that property is right now exiting Old Apopka Road and Clarkona Road, so they don't need Igress and Igress Eastman there. So the funding source for these two properties, for the acquisition of the two properties, the budget line 401, which is the utility reserves. And the recommended motion is to authorize the mayor to execute the contract for purchase of 4.24 gross acres of real property, which is parcel ID 22212800000144, located at 556 Snowden Road, Apopka, Florida 32703, in the amount of $212,000. And Mayor, do you want me to go with the other one at the same time or you're gonna be one by one?
We'll just take two separate votes.
Two separate votes.
Two separate votes.
Okay.
Yeah, do you have the, the overall, the master plan or you did not bring that?
No, we didn't do that. We, I just wanted to show what we currently
Right.
Own as a property, which is the highlighted area
Yeah.
And what are the two properties so we can create this adjacency to the other?
Yeah.
Three.
If you wouldn't mind doing me a favor, I mean, I'm sure this will be, this should go through pretty easy, but if you wouldn't mind sending kind of your, the, the plan that you've got with the purchase of this property, all the commissioners, kind of the vision for the ponds and how that would look after, after we've purchased them?
Yes.
Okay, that, that would be great.
So to include the, if we incorporate the two remaining?
Correct, yes, correct. Yes, 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 thank you.
Yeah, we're looking, this opportunity is probably to create another large pond. And maybe we can divide into two pieces for almost potentially 300 million gallons. And that will solve a lot of the problems that we have in the city, especially with all the reclaim water we're getting from the other utilities, like Orange County, not directly to this side, but we're getting about maximum 7 million gallons a day from City of Altamont Springs, comes from the south side. And also we're getting another maximum 3 million gallons a day from Utilities, Inc., that's the former Solando Utilities, coming from the north side, which puts, with the 3 million gallons a day we're producing at the side, that's putting another 13 million gallons a day, which creates a problem because we only have 6 million. we only have 6 million gallons of storage capacity, as you can see, in those four storage tanks, right? So you have two of 2 million gallons and two of 1 million gallons.
Yeah, so some, you know, the, we were able to renegotiate the Orange County contract, we reduced the amount of water we were, we were being required to take.
Yeah, and they've been a really good partner to us.
Yeah, they have.
The past few years, yeah.
But, but the thing is, I think we're, I think our water, reclaim water usage is just north of a billion gallons, is that right?
It's about 6 million gallons a day. So we're producing at the site about 3, 3.2 million gallons a day, and we need another 3 million, but we're receiving way more than that. So that creates a situation, which is the transitional period that we have until we get all the demand.
But by having more storage, then we don't have to take out of the ground, which at some point, they're going to, St. John's is not going to allow us to take water out of the ground for irrigation, so.
And with the Golden Gem Reserve that we put in place last summer, actually, that helped tremendously.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so any questions for Vlad? Okay, if not, I'll look for a motion to approve the contract for the purchase of 4.24 acres located at 556 Snowden Road for the amount of $212,000.
Is that 2.4 or 4.24?
4.24, I think.
4.24, that's the first problem.
All right.
Okay. Motion to?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, need a motion to, well, see, anybody have any comments on the approval of the contract to purchase the 0.34 gross acres? Okay, that will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the contract for the purchase of 0.34 acres on Snowden Road in the amount of $17,000.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson? Second. Second by, second by Commissioner Velasquez, that was a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Vlad, appreciate it. So just be sure to get, put your, your design plan together that now that we've purchased these two pieces of property, that we can show the commissioners how that'll look and the amount of storage.
Perfect, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Susan, Ordinance Number 2900.
Ordinance Number 2900, an ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city industrial, for certain real property located east of Coral Hills Road and west of Clarkona Road, comprising 1.34 acres more or less, and owned by E&amp;H Clarkona LLC, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Good afternoon, Allison Williams, Planner One with the City's Planning Division. The subject property is located east of Coral Hills Road and west of Clarkona Road. The property was annexed into the city on December 15th, 2021, via Ordinance Number 2890. The applicant is requesting a small-scale future land use amendment to change the future land use designation from county rural to city industrial. The application is being processed simultaneously with an application to rezone the subject property from County A1 to IL Light Industrial. DRC and Planning Commission recommends approval. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Allison? Anybody from public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2900 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith? Second. Second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Ordinance Number 2901.
Ordinance Number 2901, an ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from County A1 Citrus Rural District to IL Light Industrial District, for certain real property located east of Coral Hill Road and west of Clarkona Road, comprising 1.34 acres more or less, and owned by E&amp;H Clarkona LLC, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Allison Williams, Planner One with the City's Planning Division. The subject property is located east of Coral Hills Road and west of Clarkona Road. The proposed development is an industrial warehouse. The request is to rezone a 1.34 acre parcel of land from County A1 Citrus Rural District to IL Light Industrial. DRC and Planning Commission recommends approval. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Allison? Anybody from public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2901 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Ordinance Number 2903.
Ordinance Number 2904, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Apopka.
Wait, we're on 2903, Susan?
Oh. Okay.
It said it was withdrawn.
Yeah, that's the one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, 2903.
Ordinance 2903 has been withdrawn, yes, okay.
Okay.
Or is it 2904, I'm sorry, go ahead, Susan, sorry about that.
So, okay, so, amending Part Three of the Land Development Code, Article 10, Section 10.3, Use Classifications and Interpretation of Unlisted Uses and Zoning District Boundaries, Subsection 10.3.1, Principal Use Classification System to Divide Tobacco Shop, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflicts, and an Effective Date.
Michael?
Good afternoon, the item before you is the continuation, this is an item that's come before you on several different times, for several different reasons. And now we're here at the culmination of the settlement agreement that was entered into between the city and the property owner. This is the culmination of the mediation that was done between the two parties as part of Florida statutes in order to resolve the issue of the tobacco shop. What's presented to you before you hear today is the Amendment to the Land Development Code, which seeks to amend the definition of tobacco shop in the code to bring it to be consistent with the current definitions for tobacco-related products in Florida statutes. We believe that by amending the code definition, it'll bring our ordinances in line with statute, and therefore resolve, one, resolve the dispute between the city and the property owner, and secondly, also alleviate any concerns that the city may have in the future in regards to any possible preemption in regards to the regulation of tobacco-related products. It also clarifies the inconsistency that was in our prior land development code when it came to tobacco-related products, tobacco substitute products, and this for, this brings in line the definition with the state definition and those regulations which the state has allowed, has, let me rephrase it, to those regulations that the state has not preempted, that still belong to the local government in regulation in this case. So staff recommends that we proceed forward to second reading in this matter. If you have any questions, I am present here to answer them.
Any questions for Michael?
I just want to say that I appreciate Mr. Segarian, as you've presented those things, the areas of concern that I gave that you have chosen to not push those forward, things that are more hazardous to our young people, and so I appreciate that and respect that. Thank you for that.
Awesome. Any other questions for Michael? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2904 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker? Second. Second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Ordinance Number 2905.
Ordinance Number 2905, an ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Vision Car Wash 2 LLC, located at 345 West Orange Blossom Trail, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Jean?
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to accept Ordinance Number 2905, the annexation of a parcel owned by Vision Car Wash 2. Parcel is located at 345 West Orange Blossom Trail, north of US 441, south of Old Dixie Highway, and west of Hawthorne Avenue, approximately a quarter of an acre in size. Parcel is an enclave abutting the city jurisdiction on its northern, southern, eastern, and western boundaries. The DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to accept Ordinance Number 2905, and hold it over for second reading and adoption on March 16, 2002, or soon thereafter. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Ordinance Number 29, excuse me, yeah, 2905 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Ordinance Number 2911.
Ordinance Number 2911, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, granting a non-exclusive franchise to Lake Apopka Natural Gas District for a 10-year period, approving the natural gas distribution franchise agreement between the City of Apopka and Lake Apopka Natural Gas District, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Good afternoon, the ordinance presented for you today is a renewal and extension of the existing, the already existing franchise agreement between the city and the Lake Apopka Natural Gas District, provide for background for the public. The district was established by the state in 1959 with authority to construct and operate a gas system in portions of Orange and Lake Counties to provide natural gas to customers within certain designated areas. For the purpose of serving customers within various cities, the district has been granted franchises by these cities, permitting the district to own and operate a natural gas system within the incorporated areas of those cities. The most recent franchise agreement between the city and the district was executed on May 20th of 2002, for a term of five years, with the option to extend the agreement for an additional five years if service is satisfactory. After May 20, 2012, the district continued making franchise fee payments to the city in furtherance of the May 20, 2002 agreement. The city and district now intend to memorialize the extension of the franchise by entering to the attach, into the franchise agreement presented to you before today, with a new term of 10 years, with the city option for an additional 10 years if service is satisfactory. The district shall pay the city a sum of presenting 6% of gross revenues derived from the sale of natural gas to all customers within the franchise area. Staff is recommending that we accept the first reading of Ordinance 2911 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on March 16, 2022. Any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions for Michael? Anybody from public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will look for a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2911 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Ordinance Number 2913.
Ordinance Number 2913, an ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Robert T. Hutter and Elena J. Hutter, located north of West Kelly Park Road and east of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Allison Williams, Planner One with the City's Planning Division. The request is to annex a 9.23 acre parcel into the City of Apopka. The subject property is located north of West Kelly Park Road and east of Plymouth-Sorrento Road. The subject property is contiguous to the city limits and is eligible for annexation pursuant to Florida Statute 171. DRC recommends approval. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Allison? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2913 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Well, Commissioner Velasquez, I guess you're probably not going to be able to give us any report.
No report.
Saturday sounds, that's what she's saying, Saturday sounds. Okay, Commissioner Bankson?
Well, just bragging on Ms. Hazel that we got to celebrate her 102nd birthday today, and she's just an amazing lady, just, I'll tell you, just as spry as can be, and lovely lady, so it was nice to get to celebrate her today.
Commissioner Smith?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Becker?
No, just reminded the public to go out and vote. Early voting started yesterday, over, I think, 300 people have voted so far early voting here at the VFW, so I would encourage everybody to be part of the civic process. Thank you.
Edward?
Mayor, Commissioner, so I have some positive news, financial update. As you can see from the sheet that you have in front of you, we're a little over, the variance is a little over $400,000 to the positive. That's a great thing. We continue to move forward on sales tax, things seem to look really, really good. It's important to watch this, but you can see that we are almost 4% above what we budgeted, or what the state gave us as an estimate, that's a good thing when it comes to sales tax dollars. So, and you can see that we're over 49% more than we were this time last year, keep in mind, we had the effects of COVID, we're very strong back then, so. But anyway, that's some very positive news. And on another note, because I know we've been talking about this, and as we get close to the audit, I did talk to the auditors late this morning, and they gave me some preliminary numbers, I think you'll be glad to hear this, that if you recall, in FY '21, we had, we had projected to use the reserves of about $900,000 in reserves to balance our budget for '21. I'm pretty confident, they've given me an unaudited number, again, it's unaudited, so, and they're still finishing the audit, things are final pieces that are coming in or whatever, but it does not look like we're going to have to dip into the reserves to complete FY '21. On that note, what is also good about that, I think, and I think, you know, it's important that you know this as well as the public, you will see in your financial statements when they come out later this year, that Camp Weewall was purchased in FY '21. Even with the purchase of Camp Weewall in FY '21, we still didn't have to go into the reserves. Now, keep in mind, we had those Duke Energy dollars, we had, we had the Duke Energy dollars, we had utility tax that we had in those, that period of time as well. So those were, those helped to cover some of that cost, a portion of that cost for Camp Weewall, so you didn't have to get into those reserves. That's a positive note going forward for the next, as we approach the next budget cycle. Also, I think what, and again, this is just preliminary, because I don't, I'm speaking based on the transactions that I know we have done that are in here, we have also not received a million-dollar grant, as of FY, when we closed the books in '21. We're still working on that, still putting those documents together. So you will have that million dollars that will come back and go in to help recover some of the dollars from the Camp Weewall. So that's very positive news, I think it's very, I think you're to be commended, I think it's, you know, a job well done, that through all this time and everything, and even with the purchase of Camp Weewall, granted, we've had some other revenues that helped us along the way to get here, but I think it's important to know that as we set up going into budget cycle for FY '23, that you didn't have to get into the reserves in FY '21. So that's important, I think, to keep in mind as we move forward. So, anyway, some positive note, positive news, I think that's important. The city is, we're doing good, so I think, you know, as we get to this next budget cycle, with the priorities and things that we'll have, that'll come from all of our departments, as we know, we should be set up well for, for that budget cycle.
All right. Thank you, Edward, appreciate it. Michael? Anything?
Just as a brief update, on Monday, we completed the closing on the sale of the, what's been commonly known as the Sandpiper Parcel. We closed on Monday, and we did receive the funds for the proceeds of that sale, so that's now complete, and I think we're almost done with the final transfer of the airport property, that, we should be closing on that transfer soon. So those are some of the outstanding real estate transactions that we're working on that are now completed, and the closing has occurred.
Are they still going to do a restaurant there?
Are they still going to do a restaurant there, she said?
I do not know what their current plans are. I have a...
Okay, okay. All right, so I've got, I've got a bunch of things, I've added a couple since this, but I'll, I'll get to you there. Rock Springs Ridge update, we had a meeting with the golf group and with the HOA, and I think they've come to a somewhat of an agreement, obviously always subject to change, just want to let everybody know. Here's kind of the outline of the agreement. The golf group will pay the HOA $1.2 million, it'll fix their clubhouse roof, their irrigation system at the clubhouse, and repay the clubhouse parking lot, they develop the 51 acres that they're going to, they're going to transfer, they'll have a 200-foot buffer from sand wedge loop. Apopka, obviously, the City of Apopka will help facilitate cleaning up the plan development documents, so that we've got just the, what we've... documents so that we've got just the, what we've built on the 51 acres, we'll close down the pud with inside Rock Springs, the current Rock Springs Ridge development. If there are any issues with the pond liners that are at Rock Springs Ridge, it's already in the agreement that we're to pay half, but it looks like they have an agreement, or have a half-life of over 100 years because they've got soil on top of the liner keeping it from sunlight, so I think the pond liner should be, should be fine. Now, that's, I think, good news. The challenges still remain, the gopher, tortoise relocation and how that is handled still to be determined, and I think probably the bigger, the more problematic area will be whether they can move the conservation easement from that 51 acres to somewhere else. So, I don't say it's a done deal, I wouldn't even say it's a, you know, it's a, I think it's a probable, but possible, somewhere between possible and probable, but I think the conservation easement is gonna be the real stumbling block because the governor, who has shown his environmental creds, is gonna take a hard look at this, he has to approve this. So, if we can get the conservation easement moved, get the gopher turtles moved, I think the rest of that should fall into place. So, that's the update on the Rock Springs Ridge.
Can I interject there for a second? Why do we keep on saying clean up the pud?
Because, because it's not our responsibility to do that, and anything, any change to the
pud would have to be applied for by the applicants or the landowners within that pud boundary, correct?
Correct. No, what we've got to do is, we've got to, we've got to give them the ability to build on the 51 acres, and we have to, we want to close down the ability to build any more houses on what's already currently there, would that be...
It's gonna depend on what's submitted, but it, and it's not gonna be really a city, to my knowledge, it's not a city-initiated amendment. However, one of the things that the city can take into consideration is whether it's going to be a, the changing of the land uses in order, I mean, it's up to the HOA group and the Gulf Group if they intend to submit to look, to change the land use of the golf course property to therefore convert it from residence, from its current residential land use to a conservation or recreational land use, and then you will then recalculate your available square footages based on the density in order to get the amount of units you need based on the residential land use that you have, and if, you change, you change the designations within the four corners of the PD. But all of this is all in speculation because it's all gonna depend on what's submitted for staff to review and then staff to present to the council for the vote.
And I just don't want to repeat what happened almost a year ago again, you know, we're making comments that the city has some sort of involvement in this, and we don't at this stage.
It depends on a determined involvement, the city's involvement is in the final approval of the land use amendments and the planned development.
The city's involvement is to react to applications made of the city.
Right, whatever's presented to the city, that's involvement, involvement in the actual real estate transaction, no, this is a private real estate transaction between two private parties.
That's the point that I'm making.
The end result of the transaction is, is still going to result in needing an application to be submitted to the city in order to be processed, to be examined, to be voted upon, just like any other property owner within the city limits.
Correct. I just want to be very final because people are watching this, because we see it on, again, on a mayoral update, that implies that there's some sort of city-led things going on, but as a city, we have no responsibility in this other than to accept an application for a potential change to that piece of land. Otherwise, we have no, we're not touching it.
Correct, the, correct, the city's lone role in the matter now is receipt, review, and consideration of an application for a land use amendment, an application for an amendment to the development agreement, site plan, master development approvals, similar to any other application. That's, that's the city's, that's all the city is done in this matter. There is, what was just earlier discussed, that's a private land transaction of which the city is not a party to.
All right, next up, legislative update on House Bill 1431, it passed the full house on February 28th, it's now over in messages at the Senate, so we're just waiting for their final approval, so hopefully we'll get that done, which will make, give us more opportunities for small restaurants to, to come into the CRA in Apopka. Next up, the update on Apopka Police Department, Orange County Sheriff's Office and Duke. We've got an arrangement now with Duke, I think Orange County and Apopka are coming together on additional cameras to give us additional surveillance on some of the high crime areas, it's working really well, I think Duke has really stepped up and wants to be a partner in helping us, help us and help Orange County make sure that we've got the cameras in places where we can start to reduce crime. Next up, kind of neat, got the groundbreaking on the Adult Education Learning Center on, right across from Wheatley, a long time coming, but I think it's gonna really be a great asset to South Apopka where you can get training for all sorts of things from plumbing to electrical to HVAC and all, everything in between, so we're excited about the partnership there. Had the opportunity to watch our hot asphalt paving machine in action this week, and really neat, it basically heats the asphalt up hot enough where it just becomes almost molten, and then you can move it around at asphalt where you have potholes, and it makes the fix a whole lot better than if you're using the cold patch, which is our current method of fixing potholes. So, I mean, it's, gosh, we've had it on order since the day we've passed our budget in October, and just now received the machine this week, and are getting the folks, you know, trained up on it. Next up, Baffle Box at Dream Lake, we've closed the road Laurel Street, I guess, yesterday and today, finishing that up, which will get, not only, you know, help us to keep Dream Lake clean, but will also give an opportunity for Dream Lake Elementary students and Apopka Middle School students, the ability to go down and take water samples and really take a real interest in water quality here in Apopka, so we're excited about that. Probably will be up and running, oh, I guess, within the next 30 days. Just so you know, March 22nd, we've got, there will be the auction for the 202 acres out, which is the, under the Rochelle Holdings, and so that will be auctioned off. There's some talk about maybe having one piece of property being just a straight-out purchase, so look forward to March 22nd, we'll kind of get, at least that, get the land back into, into ability where we can, they can start to build on that. And then, last but not least, and I'm too bad that Commissioner Velazquez couldn't say this for us, but got a little intro for Saturday night, Never Stop Believing Journey Tribute Band.
Hi, everybody, I'm Jonathan Gaitan Journey, and I've been a member of this band for 40 years, and also a member of your city, Apopka, and we are so excited that our music is being played by you guys very, very soon, and we're very excited that you're going to perform some of our iconic songs, and we wish you all the luck, we wish everybody a great time in Apopka, and our new lead singer has something to say for you.
Don't stop believing, guys.
So, there we go, Saturday night, we've got the Never Stop Believing Journey Tribute Band, so come on out, should be a great crowd, great, great evening, so move that.